All right. Okay, um, let's call the meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that. We have a motion from Councilmember Henry and a second from Councilmember McKnight. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, moving on to community comment. Anything you guys want to say? No? Okay, um, no presentations and reports. We'll move on to the public hearing for Commerce Drive, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are holding a public hearing for renaming Dewalter Drive south of Levi-Griffin. So as you'll recall, part of the Lakeview project, there was approval for Commerce Drive, which is the north-south street that Lakeview will access as well as future industrial, commercial users. The section of the road south of Levi-Griffin was plotted as Dewalter when it came in with the Mills Fleet Farm. So, we are opting to rename the south portion to Commerce, so it's consistent across the intersection of Levi-Griffin. Dewalter is going to be reused in Meridian Field. Since it's a historic name in Carver, we found it appropriate to keep it in the community, so we were able to essentially reuse it in Meridian Field. So Dewalter will move, Commerce Drive will extend across Levi-Griffin. So a public hearing is required. It was noticed. Uh, no one has addressed off Dewalter today, which makes it pretty easy. There is one outlet that received a mailing that it's zero Dewalter. It's south of the street. So, it was noticed. A mailing was sent, but a public hearing is required.
Okay, um, so we'll open the public hearing. Those wishing to address the city council should come forward and state their name and address for the record. After all comments are received, the public hearing will be closed. No further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. Should we leave it open for a bit?
You can if you would like.
Just do that for good measure. Um, all right, let's move on to the consent agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. We have a motion from Councilmember Henry and a second from Councilmember Maak.
Um, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, no unfinished business, new business, 9.1 Fire Engine Acquisition. Chief Meyer and Chief Trimble, come on up.
Speak into the microphone.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for taking time to hear our presentation. So, we're here tonight to talk about the proposed replacement of Engine 12. Our current proposal has us replacing Engine 12 and Tanker 11 with one vehicle. It would be considered a single axle pumper tanker with the estimated cost of $650,000. This would have a reduction in our capital improvement investment over the next several years from $880,000 down to an estimated $650,000. This truck would be multi-use for tanker, engine, and rescue scenarios such as vehicle accidents, things like that. It would carry 18,000 gallons, 1,800 gallons of water on it and would transport a crew of six. It would meet all current standards. We did present this proposal to the fire board, and they overall gave a positive response on this vehicle. Let's go through and talk about Engine 12 a little bit. Engine 12 is a 1988 Ford L9000. It's currently 31 years of age and is one of the oldest pieces of equipment that Carver, City of Carver has in operation. When we got this truck, it replaced our 1954 Tanker, which only had a trash pump on it, so it met the needs at the time. Engine 12 was used 18 times in 2018 for various uses: automobile accidents, structured fires. It was a secondary tanker, and this truck also can transport a crew of six, or a crew of five, sorry. Um, this truck was on the capital improvement plan for 2019 for a replacement cost of $605,000.
Callie, this is just purely out of curiosity, what is a trash pump?
Maybe before my time, but it's basically just a pump that can pump water, but wasn't rated to any specifications or anything.
Okay.
Let's talk about some of the issues that Engine 12 has. Um, the scene and emergency lighting is very poor, uh, just because of the older technology with the lights and the placement of the lights. The generator is constantly having issues. It doesn't meet NFPA or DOT standards. The foam system is, uh, inoperable and would require a $6,000 repair. Because of, we currently have foam on Engine 13, Chief Meyer made the decision that we should save our money because this truck is up for replacement. Now, we're going to talk about Tanker 11 for a little bit. It's a 1981 Mac that is 38 years old. It's currently on loan from the DNR, so when we're done using it, it would need to go back to them. This truck carries 3,000 gallons of water, can transport only a crew of two, and currently the tank is rusting from the inside out and would eventually need a replacement of $25,000 to fix the tank issue. Um, this truck is on the capital improvement plan for 2022 for replacement cost of $275,000. If the new apparatus gets approved, Tanker 11 would be removed from the capital improvement plan for 2022.
Can you say that part again? You said if approved, it would remove from?
It would get removed from the capital improvement plan from 2022.
2022, thank you.
Now, let's go through some of the safety standards. So, I'm just gonna briefly talk about what the truck was 30 years ago to a modern-day truck. So, a truck 30 years ago just came with a lap belt on it. A modern-day truck would have a shoulder belt along with a seatbelt monitoring system. Basically, that means we can't leave without it making horrible noises inside the cab unless you put your seatbelt on, which no driver or officer is going to let that truck leave without that happening. 30 years ago, trucks didn't have airbags. Nowadays, you can get the options that have airbags added into them. 30 years ago, we were wearing our helmets to the calls, so it was no issue. Nowadays, it's against NFPA standards to have the helmets on our heads while we're going to the call. They need to be stowed away into a safe location, so a modern-day truck would have helmet retention on the roof for the helmets to buckle into. A modern-day engine would provide us a cab redesign, which would allow increased headroom. The doors are a little larger, and it would decrease our step out of the truck from about 37.5 inches off the ground to about 20.5, which is a decrease of about 17 inches. So, just from stepping out of the truck, it would be a lot more safer. And then, obviously, then with the improvements they made with lighting, LED lighting on a new, modern truck is obviously a lot safer and better when we're on accident scenes and out on calls at night. Let's talk about what this project includes. So, if approved, the project would include a $10,000 allowance for mounting tools, so the manufacturer would mount the tools properly and safely inside the truck. It would include a generator, a lot like what's on Engine 13, which would be PTO-driven, so we wouldn't have to deal with gas and things like that. It would include a light tower, similar to what's on Engine 13. This is phenomenal for night calls, accident scenes, house fires, anything. We even used it the other day for a fire alarm sounding just because it lights up the whole front yard, so we can see where we're walking, what we're doing. It would include a Deluge monitor, similar to what's on 13, so this is a basically nozzle that can spray 500 gallons per minute. And also, a thermal imaging camera. Another thing the project would include is the manufacturer would be responsible for sending out people to train us. We would train on a Monday night, so, um, but wouldn't be any additional training on our behalf, so they would send somebody out to, uh, train us. What the cost does not include is some of the things that are currently on some of our engines. So hoses that we've reused off of Engine 12, our auto extrication tools that we currently use on Engine 12, the radios, and any small tools that we might be able to reuse out of the current engine. So, let's talk about next steps. So, our steps would be to get approved from City Council to go out to bid. We'd need to complete the specs, send the specs out for bid, and then bring the bids back for City Council for approval to purchase. So, at this time, do you have any questions?
How many gallons does this new, the new one, hold?
Roughly 1,800.
Okay.
It will all depend what we find, you know, it might be up or down a little bit, but right around 1,800 gallons.
Okay. But you have the capability of releasing 500 gallons a minute? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, but we only do that when we're really hooked to a hydrant or have a water source.
Okay.
You mentioned that this purchase and merging two trucks into one will remove the purchase of a tanker from the capital improvement plan for 2022. After this purchase, do you know what your next large capital purchase would be when that hits?
It wouldn't be for roughly 10 years.
Perfect, okay.
You guys can use most of the hand tools and, and stuff.
Yeah.
Oh, what was the question? It'll come.
Maybe it's the question you had. So, you know, you kind of went through what you're going to reuse, what you're buying new. Is there anything additional that will be needed for this truck, or with this purchase, you're fully operational and running, no wish list?
Um, there's some, there's not a whole lot else we'd need for this truck. We did get a grant for a fan, so that's already coming in. Other than that, there's minor, minimal things, but nothing.
Are we able to sell the old truck, or what is going to happen to that one?
Um, we talked to Public Services. They came up with some ideas. There's not a whole, the truck isn't really worth a whole lot. So, we have asked the manufact, we've had, the manufacturers we brought in to help us write, get some ideas on some specs. We've asked them if they would be willing to sell it, and none of them have jumped on that bit, so we don't really believe the resale value of that truck is going to be real high.
Because it needs collector plates on it?
Yeah, pretty much.
And a harness.
And the other truck goes back to the DNR, correct?
Yeah.
And the, the estimated cost of $650,000, is that for brand-new, or are we buying, are we considering used, or?
That would be new.
That would be?
New.
New, got it.
And Courtney and I are on the township fireboard, and I think, are you not?
Not anymore. No, but we discussed it.
Okay, so you were at the time. Um, and we did discuss it with them, and they were, like you said, generally in favor, but I don't remember there being anything that was glaring that the township was not in support of it too.
Lots of questions, good discussion, but plenty of support.
And it'll free up a bay in the fire station.
Looks good to me.
All right.
I'll make a motion to authorize the fire department to prepare plans and specifications for a new fire engine.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Sear and a second by Councilmember Maak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Danny, Callie, thank you.
You're welcome.
You guys are the best.
All right, um, next up, 9.2, the comprehensive plan design carver, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm asking you to review a resolution that allows staff to submit the comprehensive plan to the Met Council for their review. So, a bit, backing up a little bit, starting at the beginning, what is the 2040 comprehensive plan? So, as part of the process, the Planning Commission and City Council served as the steering committee for the 2040 comprehensive plan. As part of that process, we coined it to be Design Carver to hopefully make it a more accessible plan, something that is a little easier to understand, a little less clunky, hopefully won't sit on a shelf for the next 10 years. So, what is the comprehensive plan? It's the vision for the city for the next 20 years. It's pretty high-level, generally 30,000 feet. There are some policy implications in there, and it works with adopted ordinances, studies, and plans to ensure quality of life and quality of community. Every group that prepares a comprehensive plan, so anyone in the seven-county metro area that's covered by the Met Council is required to have the same elements in the plan. Those are land use, transportation, water resources, parks and trails, housing, economic competitiveness, resilience, and implementation. Thinking back to when you all started this process, March 2017 was the kickoff. The Planning Commission and City Council met 10-plus times. Open houses were held here on August 22nd, and then part of the open house with the fire department and Public Services on October 2nd. Something that's required through the comprehensive plan process is jurisdictional review. So, any jurisdiction that touches Carver, as any authority in Carver, has six months to comment. So, on December 21st of 2018, the plan was sent to those 13 groups. I have a slide that lays out who they are. So, we're within that comment period right now. It's not closed yet. We've received one comment thus far from MINDOT, simply stating that they did not have any comments. So, at this point, we haven't heard any adverse impacts of the plan. It's anticipated that the submittal will go to Met Council June 2019. Something that's interesting to think about is that the work isn't done at that point. That's when the Met Council does their review. Um, every community that I've talked to at this point has gotten a letter back that's pretty substantial and lengthy that requires revisions to the plan, so it's not over in June. It will go into the Met Council. They're pretty swamped right now. They're getting comp plans from seven-county areas, so cities, townships, counties. So, I don't anticipate that the letter will come back July 2019. Likely this fall, we'll pick up some more work on the comp plan. So, two important elements, uh, these are the things that we probably reference the most in that comp plan. So, left is the future land use map that shows our total growth area with the proposed uses that we, how we guide it, so not necessarily the zoning, but the guidance of the land. And then, something that's really, really important in Carver is the right, the constraints map. So, thinking about areas that we need to preserve either for natural resources or cultural resources, so that's steep slopes, ravines, mature trees, things that we value as a community that will need to be protected throughout planning. My favorite part, I think, about the comp plan was the survey that went out. It was really helpful to get this information from 270 respondents from the City of Carver, which was fantastic. So, the information that was gathered through the survey was important not only for the Design Carver process, but it's also changed some of the conversations we've started with developers, thinking about things that people in Carver value, things that also they find important, but also feel kind of scary in the next 10 years for them. So, we've been using this information for an array of projects and discussions, but it was something that was really fantastic that came out of this process, especially for Survey Monkey. And the adjacent jurisdictions that are looking at the plan right now within that six-month period are on the screen now. So, you'll see, uh, City of Chaska, several townships, counties, and then some of the groups that we don't necessarily think of as jurisdictions that are near us, but definitely cover areas, so MINDOT, the DNR, watershed districts, um, and then the school district. So, they all are within that six-month period, working on their review now. Next step, so the Planning Commission reviewed at their, uh, past meeting in April, they held a required public hearing. So, part of this process is that the city needs to hold a public hearing at some point in the process, so it was noticed. Uh, no members of the public attended the public hearing. We worked through some questions, comments at the Planning Commission level. They forwarded a recommendation to you on a five-to-zero vote to allow staff to submit to the Met Council. So, again, that submission will go in June. That's when the six-month review period ends. Met Council reviews, sends the letter, and then we revise based on that review that they did. And then, it comes back before you for final adoption. So, again, likely not July, but as we work through some of the things that they find either incomplete or out of sync of the work that they're doing, I'll be able to provide you an update on things that we're working on before your formal adoption of the plan. I'll open it up for questions, comments.
Erin, I have a question, and it doesn't necessarily pertain to ours, um, but have we received Chaskas yet?
Yes.
And since we do border Chaska up by 212, how does that compare and look with what we have planned in that section for us?
So, that was something that we've thought about pretty extensively, thinking both Victoria and Chaska all coming together at that same area, and thinking a little bit, it's a little bit about who's going to get there first. Um, so, something that changed pretty significantly when I stepped in the comp plan process was matching those communities a little bit differently. So, a significant portion of the northern border was low-density residential. That was meeting some of Victoria and Chaska more a commercial-industrial user. So, that was important in the future land use map, making some of those changes, just so we don't, we're not the second person there and then reacting, we're able to think about it more collectively. So, it was considered when we worked on the future land use map.
And has that been reciprocal? I mean, do you have discussions with Victoria and Chaska to see how that kind of works out in those corners for us?
Yes. The tricky part is that, um, we requested a six-month extension. Victoria and Chaska did not. So, they were a little further ahead of us at that point when we started developing some of these maps, having some of these conversations. But yes, we have, um, met with Chaska and Victoria, just thinking about some of these areas where we're going to come together, potentially partnering if we need to, if there's some way that we can serve each other differently for utilities instead of all racing with our own systems if they don't all necessarily work in that area. So, yes, it's likely going to be pretty collaborative in that top corner.
Okay. And predominantly, what would you say their zoning is next to ours?
So, Victoria comes down, that's their large commercial-industrial user. Chaska has some areas that they're leaving as like green, open spaces, that a little bit further south. But generally, I foresee, um, with the new interchange in Chaska, that there's likely going to be some additional commercial and industrial users in that area.
And where's, I know they've had that green space on there for ever, yes, forever. Um, does that, I mean, does that have any concerns for us that it's going to be right across from all this commercial-industrial? I mean, I know we can't control what Chaska is doing, but, um, they're aware that that's still next to ours and, and they're still going forward with it?
Yes, so they are reviewing our plan too. So, we both get to compare the, compare both of them, look at them side-by-side. At any point, we're both able to make changes. We're a little bit late in the process now if it's going to be something substantive, substantive, if we want to take like a whole swath and change it to green space. But yes, we all very much have been reacting to each other's plans.
Great, thank you.
Does the Met Council at all comment on that sort of thing where cities are abutting? And make some comments and recommendations to, I don't know, for consistency, or just any conflicts?
I wouldn't say that they look for conflicts necessarily, but I would say that they do review where they meet, just to ensure like traffic plans or something that are county, county-wide. So, things that are in Carver County's plan also match what we have in ours. So, the communities do need to work together from that standpoint for the type of street that's going to be put in.
Sure.
So, it's not so much cut and dry, like, yes, these two things match up, but yes, these two things would work together.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, but just a comment. I think excellent job on getting it narrowed down to this few slides. I know this is years, a lot of work into it. And a curiosity question is, uh, how many pages is the entire document, the Design Carver, that you'll be submitting?
I would say maybe 300 pages. A lot of it is pretty maps, so it's not all dry text.
Wow. And tonight, we're going to give the approval to submit it to the Met Council in June. But up until then, you'll still be taking feedback and?
Yes, very much so.
What's the best way to send feedback of somebody in the community?
Email. So, email me at esmith@cityofcarver.com. And something too, as you work through it, if you see things, um, I would love to hear, like, I know Courtney, or the, sorry, the mayor noticed that in the comp plan, Carver Ridge was called Sunny Ridge still, so just some of those tweaks that we've made. The senior living came in at Sunny Ridge at concept plan, switched to Carver Ridge through the plating process. So, some of those quick fixes would be fantastic if you're reading through and catch anything.
Still working my way through it. Um, the other thing that I think is really so important to note is just the future land use map. And you kind of talked about it, but, you know, with all the development that's going on, it's so important for the folks who are so excited about building houses to kind of know what's going in, in and around them, you know, where are the industrial areas? What are the neighbors going to be? Those fields, those unbuilt parcels of land aren't going to remain unbuilt forever. So, in this plan, this is that resource where you can go in and find it, and it's pretty easy, it's pretty self-explanatory. Um, and if not, if there are any questions, Erin's always a really good resource for that kind of stuff, so that's my soapbox. Other questions, comments over here?
Right. Well, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 116-19, allowing the city planner to submit Design Carver to the Metropolitan Council.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Maak and a second from Councilmember Henry. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, um, moving on to water filter acquisition, Mr. Skok.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, we're going to ask you to consider the purchase of our second water filtration skid. Um, if you remember back, uh, in 2016, we kind of started this process. Um, we got final approval from the Department of Health in 2016 to install a permanent, our first permanent filtration skid in the bottom of Tower Number Two, which is located by Fleet Farm. 2017, we did get that installed, and now we're here a couple of years later looking for the next skid. Um, as we continue to grow, um, we're looking at, uh, the summer demands continuing to increase as well. So, with population growth and that summer demand, we're looking for that second skid. One thing to remember is these are, these filtration skids are for well four. This isn't actually a part of, um, the current treatment plant that's at, um, the Mount Hope, on Mount Hope on top of the hill. These here, um, help kind of defer, um, some of that demand in the middle of summer form. So, it does give us that capacity, a little bit of resting time, so, for that system. And again, uh, like I said earlier, this year is because of the increased, um, population in town and that summer demand that we're seeing. So, um, just to give you, um, an idea, in the, in the winter months here, we're looking at about 295,000 to 300,000 gallons a day of water we use. In the summer, we see peaks up to 1.2 million gallons a day that we're using. So, there is quite a, quite a swing that we're trying to, trying to match, and our current facility is designed for 1 million gallons a day. So, we're, these skids are definitely helping with that. In trying to get this done, we did get two quotes, um, the low quote, um, it was 112,000, uh, $255. Um, this is a skid that the, uh, public service staff will install ourselves. Um, it's easy enough to put in, put in place. When we did put in, uh, Skid Filter One, we had it set up so we could add a second skid, so that's something that we would do in-house. And the other thing I guess just to point out too is just a kind of a, an FYI, is May 20th, the work session will come, will be coming back talking about our long-term, uh, water filtration needs and supply that we'll be looking at as well. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The first skid, if I'm not mistaken, there's three parts to it?
Yep.
Okay, and then, so you're just going to add another one and, and you split the water and kick it out that way?
Correct. When we put the piping in for the first one, we had it set up so that we could add this skid on. So, there's a couple valves in our quote, that is all we needed for it, and then the additional piping, there's a couple small pieces that to make it, I make it sound easy, so, but it's, there's a few pieces there, but it's.
And the second skid was going to allow us to do another 250,000 gallons a day?
Up to, yep. It's about 150, um, gallons per minute that'll do, so, um, that range you're looking at is right about that.
Is this the same, um, manufacturer, are we buying it from the same company we got it from last time?
Yep, yep, it'll be the same skid manufacturer.
Have there been any issues with it?
No, I was just, uh, running the numbers and stuff. So, since we put this in in, uh, 2017, we've run 27 million gallons through that current filter for treating and doing that, uh, shaving that, uh, summer demand off. So, it's operated well, and this will be a great addition for us, uh, for this coming into the summer.
I know you're planning to bring us a long-term plan going forward, but for, you know, 1.4 million gallons a day, how long do you think that that's going to last us with the amount of, with our rate of adding new homes and things like that? Is that a couple of years?
Um, with this capacity we have, yeah, we're probably buying ourselves a, a couple of years right now. Um, and it depends on, obviously, the growth, but
Certainly.
we're, we're hoping this skid gets us the next couple of years.
And I have a question for Mr. Skok. Does this, is this something your staff, your team can install? Or would there be additional cost to install it?
Nope, this would be something we would install. We did the last one with the filter media. We installed that as well, so. Um, and we, we set it up. When we did the permanent installation, we hired a local contractor, so we kind of set it up so that we can install this one.
Thank you.
Is this the last skid that you can put in up there, or is there more room for capacity?
Easily, this is the last skid that can be put in. I mean, there's always ways to shoehorn something else in, but this is really kind of the, the last one that we can do it as staff and kind of go at it this, so.
Great.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a water filter, uh, filtration skid from Vesco Inc. For the Mount, not to exceed 112,255 dollars.
I'll second that. Um, we've got a motion by Councilmember Henry and a second by Councilmember McKnight. All in, or, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson, if I may, do we want to go back to close the public hearing, that agenda item number four?
Yeah, I was going to do that right before the end, but thank you, don't let me forget. I appreciate that, thank you. Let's see, let's just keep going down here. The waiver agreement with Excel Energy for construction in Community Park. Back to Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I am sure you are well aware, the Carver Black Sox are holding the state tournament this summer in Community Park. So, along with that, there are some improvements that they're looking to make to Swanson Field and Community Park as a whole. Something that we know to be tricky, but a known fact in Community Park is that there are power lines through it, which Excel has an easement for across much of the park. So, on the map, the two black lines that run across the field show the easement area. And then, there is a drawn with a label, the press box. So, the Carver Black Sox have worked with Excel Energy to allow construction of the press box within that easement, where easements typically, you're not permitted to do a ton of work, so this is a little bit outside of what is permitted typically in an easement. So, tonight, we're reviewing the consent to improvements. So, through this process, the city attorney has reviewed, along with the league or insurance holder, thinking through this project. And there are some interesting things that we need to think about before signing off on it completely. So, in the agreement, a couple of things to note, Larry, jump in if I completely go off base. But in the agreement, that's before you in the packet, Excel would have the option to remove improvements within the easement area. So, that might not just be the press box, it could also be infrastructure that's there today. So, it could be the bleachers, the field, anything that's in that easement area. It allows future installation of Excel's improvements within that easement area. So, a scary example would be adding a pole to the middle of Swanson Field. So, this agreement does not cover that language, that Excel is opening it up a little bit, that they could add improvements. And Excel could also need to access the area to preserve property, but they could tear up the field with little implications to Excel. So, on the surface, this seems like a pretty slam dunk project. The Black Sox are going to have this great tournament, we'll have this press box, it'll be fantastic. But there are some implications to consider with this agreement with Excel.
With that easement, don't they already have the right to go in there and remove and do work right now?
Yes, they do. What's, Excel always gets something when they give something. I mean, it's just kind of the nature of Excel. But yes, they have, the, the original easement was given by the Seagulls back in 1956. It's pretty specific about the number of poles they could put in there, but it's not specific as to where the location is. So, if they wanted to rearrange poles, I think Councilmember Mock is correct, they could do that. What, you know, what Ms. Smith is getting at, I mean, and probably the big rub in this is, Excel's effectively asking for a release from the city for any liability, if anybody gets hurt because of Excel's operations, if they remove anything, if they change anything in the future. They're asking for an expansion of some rights they don't have under the existing easement. That's pretty much standard plan for Excel, when you need something from them. Because they've got, you know, candidly, large portions of Excel's distribution system is based on easements that date back, some of them to the 20s and 30s. And so, they don't have the provisions that more modern ones would do. So, when Excel gets requests like this, they may say yes, but they're getting some things that they want. And, you know, so you just need to know that there's a price tag going in. I mean, if somebody gets hurt because of an Excel installation, well, you're releasing them. If they decide to remove your improvements, you know, they had certain rights before that. The original easement that was given by the Seagulls, here's things that were prohibited. Couldn't stack hay bales underneath it, because it was, it was all tillable acreage at the time. But Excel has clearly consented to the ballpark. They're consenting to the press box, you know, so they're, they're giving the city some things. But because of the, a little bit of the push-pull of what you're giving, I think it was pretty clear between, you know, between Mr. American Smith and I, that we need to lay this one out for the council. I'm not going, you, you folks know me. If I was going to tell you, you shouldn't absolutely do it, I'd tell you, you shouldn't absolutely do it. But I'm just telling, I want you to know what Excel gets in exchange for you getting a press box.
I assume that where it's located is where, exactly where the Black Sox want the press box, or that they're contractually obligated to have the press box. There's no discussion of moving it outside the easement area, along that third baseline?
Their preference was to have it there.
What was that?
The Black Sox' preference was to have it there.
I have a couple questions. When it says the improvements for the park would be by the Carver Black Sox, does that mean that they're funding it?
Correct.
And then, who would own the press box? The Carver Black Sox, or the city, or Excel?
So, Swanson Field is a little bit different of a situation, that it's in a city park, but it's the Black Sox' field. So, they largely do improvements to the park, but then it's still city-owned.
So, was it a clear ownership on the press box?
I don't, that issue is not, that issue is not resolved, and Excel doesn't care who owns the press box. Excel's permit and consent runs to the city, not to the Black Sox. And what, what we're talking about here is a different issue, which is the rather interesting relationship. Many of the communities I work in have with their town team.
As a general rule, Councilmember Sayer, any permanent structure within the parks, the city would consider as its property. So, it might be funded by an organization, it might have volunteer hours, but it's city property once it's permanent. Now, there are some items that could be removed, and I, something that I would consider hyper-local to an organization. I think this, if that was presented to the city, we would say, if you want to remove your press box and take it, go ahead. But there are, you know, some pieces that are going to have to stay in there. I don't know if, I don't know if a press box is, is one of those, but it's really specific to the Black Sox' use. There wouldn't be any city use that I can think of that relate to it.
And then, the contract in the packet, did we write that, or did Excel?
Excel wrote it.
Does it meet your blessing, Larry?
Subject to the council recognizing what you're giving up, and what you're, the release provisions you're giving to Excel, I mean, it's, it's the price of admission for getting this consent from Excel.
I assume that the press box will be built, they're going to have to pull the permits and do everything just like that.
Correct.
Other questions, concerns? No?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor and city staff to execute the consent to improvements for Community Park by the Carver Black Sox.
Motion by Councilmember Henry?
I'll second to the motion.
A second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving back to item 6.1, the public hearing for Commerce Drive. We need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember McKnight, and a second from Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's our motion carries. Allergies. All right, then we need a motion for the renaming.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 03-2019, renaming DeWalter Road, south of Levi Griffin Road to Commerce Drive.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember McKnight, and a second from Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, thank you. Let's see, Councilmember, Communications, Councilmember Knight?
I have no updates. There was, late in April, a Parks Commission meeting that was a joint kind of work session with us here in the council, and I thought that was really productive. So, appreciated all those that attended.
I don't have anything.
And my meeting isn't for a couple weeks, so I got nothing.
All right, I don't have anything. Erin?
Just when I had the council notice that Don Brash resigned from the Parks Commission, just wondering if the council would like to advertise for that, excuse me, advertise for that position, or reach out to the candidates that applied during the last round of interviews, to see if they're interested.
How many other candidates did we have last time? Because I thought we filled like at least two.
I believe there's one or two that were interested that weren't appointed.
I guess I'd be inclined to take from the pool that we had already.
Because if I recall, that pool was.
Pretty good.
Deep, yeah. It was, and they already showed their, their willingness and their, and their interest in doing it, so that would be my, my preference.
I agree.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Brian?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, Brent, but you're just moving up the alternates now, right? And then, we're going to be a second alternate that would be open, okay.
Still nothing? Larry? Back row?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second to the motion.
We have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Henry, and a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.